America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate that. The absence of the clerk this evening, I'm going to have the treasurer, please call the roll.
Trustee Jermaine?
Here.
Trustee Kalani?
Here.
Trustee Petrusi?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Treasurer Horning here, and our clerk Hopkins is absent. Do we have a quorum?
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalani, second by trustee Petrusi. Any discussion? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number five is call to the public. You going to call to the public this evening? You'd like to come forward and state your name for us, please?
My name is Kelly.
Good evening.
I am the HIA president of the executive board.
Okay.
For those of you who don't know, HIA is the Heartland Area Athletic Association. Standing here with me is General Terry, the lacrosse commissioner.
Good evening.
And I'm also representing John Orta, who is our football commissioner, who was not able to attend tonight.
Okay.
First, let me say thank you for the opportunity to address you guys. I appreciate my voice being heard on behalf of HIA, and I appreciate the open minds to listen and consider the point's rolling. HIA truly values partnership that we have formed with township, and we have seen the relationship between township and HIA strengthen and grow since 2012. As you know, HIA is a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization that provides recreational sporting opportunities for families and Heartland area schools. HIA and Heartland Township entered into a partnership for Heritage Park back in 2012 for the football and lacrosse use. After completing one season there, there is no question that it's an excellent atmosphere for both our players and our parents, especially for our families who have multiple childrens in the sport. Being at the same location provides so many positives for them. Unfortunately, we learned after one football season that the maintenance costs that were originally projected was significantly inaccurate. Please keep in mind, being an all-volunteer organization, there is periodic turnover with our board members. And the original negotiators and signing on behalf of HIA parted our organization within months of signing the agreement. This is obviously an agreement that needs to be viewed with trial and error, theory and test, and continuous revisiting and continuous amendments. Again, we're a nonprofit organization trying to provide a safe, a fun, growing atmosphere for our children in Heartland. Being nonprofit, sustaining the maintenance bills that are required for Heritage Park is likely going to bankrupt Heartland football and Heartland lacrosse. Those sports would cease to exist in Heartland, and our community could potentially stop growing with the lack of appeal due to sporting programs offered. So many families moved to the Heartland community for our excellent sporting programs. I would say that. We simply are asking for the township to take on the lawn maintenance for Heritage Park in the terms of mowing. With Heritage Park also being labeled as a public park, we understand that the township would also love to see the park beautifully maintained, as it should be, and HIA cannot do this wrong. Between football and lacrosse, this program affects more than 500 families in our community. We are not just asking for this on behalf of HIA, we are asking for this on behalf of more than 500 families that touch Heartland Township's Heritage Park annually. Thank you for your time and your consideration of this matter.
Thank you. And I will, if I can just speak on behalf of the board, I'm going to reach out to both of you, and we'll set up a meeting. I know there's been several meetings with the township manager.
Yeah.
But there's a lot more history to this, and I want you to understand how we got to where we are today, and we won't get into it tonight.
Sure.
But we'll set up a meeting, and then we'll, if need to, we'll come back in front of the board and discuss it again, okay?
We would like that, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that the relationship between the township and HIA has been tremendous since I came on board in 2012. The ability to work with Mr. Wickman, Mr. West has been great, and strong bonds and relationships have really formed. And closing, I just want to let you know, we didn't come to this point very easily. Both football and lacrosse have sliced and diced our budgets to the point where we tried to make this work any way possible, and at the end of the day, it just became a mismatch. We're just trying to find a way to keep it financially feasible for lacrosse and football.
And just so you understand, there's people on this board that had had, I coached HIA football for eight years. I also coached lacrosse. I've also coached a number of other sports in Heartland. We also have developed a model, and that's what's really the key to success, is coming up with a successful model. And I think it would be good to, as Supervisor Fountain has indicated, and I believe he's also had kids go through the various support programs, reaching out, and I think the subcommittee that we have for our parks is probably the first place to really talk about this. But it may take a little bit of effort on your part to look at your model, to determine what's appropriate, how you can go about. Maybe the model doesn't work that you have current, and we need to look at other models. I can tell you that we started the teen center. And the teen center's budget that the Heartland Township Board provides doesn't provide for all the costs associated with that organization, an organization which is not fueled by 500 Does a lot of fundraising to maintain that program. If it didn't have that program, it wouldn't exist. So, and I understand the expenses, because I was there, I've been part of that system. So, I'd be glad to sit down and talk to you a little bit about how we might solve the situation, but that's what's going to, we need to look at that.
Yes, I welcome that opportunity, and we have been very open with the focus we met. If that's the next step, then we welcome everyone's help.
We will set something up with you if you're sure. It won't be till next week, because our clerk sits on the end as well.
Thanks for talking.
Thank you. Yep. Mr. Vatell? We are at call to the public.
Did you want?
I thought you might be on the side of the county for a reason. Greetings.
Now, I just wanted to stop over here. My name is Hank Vatell, I'm running for State Revenue, 47th District, and I'm currently handy township supervisor. So I am familiar with some of the issues that townships have, but I would like to hear the issues that Heartland Township has, and specifically, everybody here has, who are kind of sensitive to roads, and all the other issues, and county issues and all. So I'm just here to introduce myself, to say that I'm open to any communication that anybody would like to have. I would be glad to answer any questions now when you have a meeting to carry on. So I am open to any suggestions, any communication that you would have. I will be glad to try to answer questions, and certainly listen to you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else that called the public this evening? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number six is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Support. I had a motion on this side, was it?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
What?
And trustee Jermaine on the other side. Any discussion?
I'd like to move item six E, authorizing the supervisor to execute the contract for Center Point, down to eight D.
Is it Kim?
Kim White.
Kim is here from the senior center this evening, and our consent agenda, and I just want to bring it to the board's attention, is the renewal of our agreement, again, with the senior center. Every year, the township gives $20,000 or $20,000 to the senior center. So I understand you're doing a great job, and we wish you the best of success this coming season. Yep.
I wanted to say hi again to everybody who seems to be in my case here. We owe it a great relationship with the aldermen here, the senior center, and I wanted to give you that analysis, brought it back and sent it back to more doors, so I appreciate the support they give. Hopefully this week, and that's.
Thank you. Thanks for being here this evening. Anything else on the consent agenda? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is pending business. It's zoning ordinance amendments. This is part of our clear zoning project that started several years ago, where we turned our existing ordinance, the paper version, into an electronic version. When we changed that over, we found several elements that needed to be corrected, because they didn't have an end to them. And before us today, we have items A through I, which will be an amendment to the clear zoning, and it clarifies those, there's still about, what, 20 or so, or 30?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. And I think they're determined right now if they even need to go forward with it, if they're, if it really needs to even happen. And then James, it's my understanding that after these are corrected, is we're going to actually input that back into the clear zoning ordinance, and then it'll be all brought back up to date. Is that correct?
Yes, please report, actually, that's almost ready. Mitchell Royal has the document, all the amendments that are pending tonight, ready to go, and turn around quickly with a clean copy of the clear zoning.
Any questions?
Just, I think we should clarify, I'm not certain that what you said is completely true. It's my understanding that item I, which is to transfer the approval of site plans to the planning commission instead of the township board, is a complete different change of direction. It's not really something that was discovered as a.
That's correct. That item, that you are correct.
But it's fair, and there was one other zoning ordinance earlier this year that we had added to those, the list of corrections. Correct. This is another one that, while we were cleaning things up, asked the policy question of the board.
And I think it should be clarified as well that the ordinance text that we are approving tonight was crafted by our attorney, and it does allow opportunities for applicants who disagree with the planning commission's decision to appeal to the township board.
There's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the recommended zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission, ordinance number 76 dash four, items A through I.
Support. A motion by trustee Jermaine, second by trustee Harper. Is there any other discussion? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number eight A is Heritage Park memorandum agreement, amendment number one. Manager Wickman?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As mentioned earlier, this is an amendment to the agreement that was made a couple of years ago with HIA and with Heartland Community Soccer. We had looked at basically three main issues that we think would be of assistance to their cash flow needs. One is the actual amount that we pay for the mowing to those organizations. We did confirm that that was light, and so in the amendment, we're recommending that that be increased, that amount be increased. The second item is that the credit for the installation of the irrigation system that the township paid for be spread out over time, and that would allow for payments to cash flow to the organizations to, for the maintenance costs. And then the third item in there is regarding the township erecting a sign to recognize sponsors, and that would allow for the organizations to sell sponsorship signs and to be able to use that revenue for the maintenance until such time as the credit has been exhausted, and then that, those would be, the proceeds would be reinvested back into the park by what's in the agreement. So we do have the agreement signed by the, by HIA and HCSA. I submit it for the board's consideration and approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I'll move to approve the Heritage Park memorandum agreement, amendment number one.
Support. Question by trustee Kalani, second by trustee Petrusi. A discussion?
Should we delay this decision until after we have further discussions with them?
I think if they've signed it already.
I think we know it's amended.
If there's anything that comes out, we can.
Any other discussion? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Trustee Jermaine has added a nay. Thank you. Item number eight B is a survey agreement from Mitchell Research. Manager Wickman?
I'm sorry, Mr. Supervisor, I missed how quickly the vote before that went. The ordinance amendment is, was a resolution.
Oh, it was a resolution.
And.
You need a roll call.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize that it wasn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Motion wasn't necessarily word for word from the resolution, but.
Okay.
If it's a friendly amendment, and we still have the motion and support for the resolution.
Why don't you go back and say, we're going to reconsider.
Yep. Let's reconsider the Heritage Park memorandum, number one, amendment number one.
No, that's seven A. No, no. The zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance, seven A.
Seven A. And it was that Kalani and Harper?
No, it was Jermaine and Glenn Harper.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I would like to amend my recommendation to approve the resolution adopting ordinance number 76 dash four, items A through I, which is an amendment to ordinance number 76 of the Heartland Township zoning ordinance.
I'll support that. And we still have Jermaine without support with Harper. Is there any other discussion? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're back to eight B.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. This agreement is to conduct some survey work regarding the roads, safer roads and pathways initiative, and the potential of a ballot question, and this is to reach out to residents and determine their issues and concerns regarding the roads and pathways, and whether or not a millage is desired. In addition, this would also ask survey questions related to the police protection issue, which is of course another important part of our strategic plan for this year. Getting direct scientific feedback on those two issues are of great import to us, and so the board had budgeted for that work to be done in the next fiscal year. As it turns out, the timing is actually more opportune to do that next week, which is right before this fiscal year ends, so we're, we did get this contract proposal for the board. It is for less than what the budgeted amount was, and in doing so, we're also asking to amend this year's budget, so we can do it this year instead of next year, next fiscal year. The proposal is from Mitchell Research. This is one of the five firms that we had previously got proposals for survey work when we did the citizen survey a couple of years ago. They are one of the higher-end state firms that do polling work specific for state and local elections and millage issues, so they have a lot of experience in this area. There is a draft of the survey questions in your packet there, and based on all those things, we're recommending that this contract be approved. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions? James, when do you think this would be finalized?
They would start making phone calls next week.
Okay.
And we would have final report by April 2nd. So quite quickly.
So it's close quickly, okay.
Right.
If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board approves the survey agreement with Mitchell Research and the associated budget of about $14,000, is that correct?
It's $13,500. Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Jermaine. Any other discussion? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Post-audit resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, this is a resolution. We have not revisited this since 2008. There have been a couple of things that have sort of nagged us operationally, and we just got around to presenting this. There are just a couple of changes to these instances where we would pay a cost in advance prior to the board approving it, and then we would bring them to the board after the fact for a post-audit. Namely, you'll see those in items number four, 12, 13, and 14. Basically postage for statutory and legal obligations that we have, that one would be of assistance to us. Money's held in escrow that belonged to others if everything's been fulfilled. It's not really a payment per se, it's giving money back to somebody that it rightfully belongs to, and we just, it's always been uncomfortable to hold that until a meeting when they've complied with everything. Other disbursements as required by law for situations that might come up. And then in number 14, you see, we just mirrored the language that's in the new purchase policy that you approved at the last meeting. We present this for your consideration and answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing prepayment of certain township bills as amended March 12, 2014.
Support. Motion by trustee Jermaine, second by trustee Kalani. Any discussion? Be none, all's in favor, please call the roll.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Trustee Kalani?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Petrusi?
Yes.
Our clerk Hopkins is absent. Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning? Yes. The resolution carries.
Thank you. And we added number eight D, which was removed from our consent agenda to authorize the supervisor to execute a contract with Center Point Energy.
Thank you, and that was at my request. I disseminated, hopefully made it all the way around, a double-sided copy of a contract with another supplier. I don't like to do this, you know that. I just feel that I would be remiss if I didn't bring it to your attention. The Center Point Energy, we've had a, we've been buying natural gas from them for a couple of years since we pooled together with Michigan Municipal League, and were able to experience about $1,000 a year savings through that arrangement. When we, in the past, or recently, we had gotten interest from this other provider in having an opportunity to compete with that contract. The contract came up for renewal, and that's the one in front of you. We had reached out to this, the other provider, and they just weren't able to get back to us in time from a couple of months ago, and so we put this on the board for approval, because it's, we have to get it approved at this meeting to keep that going. The only reason I bring this is because they did just send it in today, and it actually is a tick lower. It's all, all else being equal, it's indexed plus 60 cents instead of indexed plus 63 cents. And the end result is saving a couple hundred dollars more a year. So if it pleases the board, our recommendation would be to go with the IGS contract, but you know, you can approve the one that you've already looked at if you prefer, but it's a couple hundred dollars.
So just so I understand, we want to approve the IGS or this one?
Well, our recommendation would be that there's a couple hundred dollars more savings by approving the new one that we just got today, the IGS one.
I have some problems with the contract.
Yeah.
As municipal entity, a couple of things that just scream out, it's governing law, it's governed by the state, the law in the state of Ohio, which normally that, what I would do is I would, they're pretty reasonable to change that to the state of Michigan. As a municipal entity, we want to be subject to our own Michigan laws, but something to, that I have a problem with. And then these damages, I'm a little bit, without reading it all the way through, I was a little concerned about that, if we terminate or if there's a problem. And, you know, it's written in, to the benefit of the supplier. It always boils down to how much we're talking about, how much we're paying them, and how much we're, how much are we going to save, and usually that sits within a range. I don't really care of the provisions, because I mean, it's about risk and reward, and if we're talking about $100,000, that would be a bigger concern. $50,000 would be a big concern. Talk about a couple thousand dollars, not as a concern. So what are we talking about in terms of how much we pay them?
Well, our natural gas bill this year was pretty big, bigger than years past. It's a few thousand dollars off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay, I mean, we're talking after chat?
That would be my, yeah. Yeah.
All right.
James, when we discussed this, wasn't this brought together by a whole group of, like, townships?
Right, the Michigan Municipal League had pooled together the Center Point Energy one, and that's who we were with before, and the one that you have in your packet is a renewal of that one. This one is, for all intents and purposes, the same, it's three cents less for MCF.
Is it a different carrier than what the MML is?
It is a different third-party supplier. I mean, we still get, you know how that works. If the board has concerns or doubt about it, I mean, it's not, for a couple hundred dollars a year savings, we can carry on, or with Center Point, if you didn't have objections to that one, it's whatever pleases the board.
Do you know if the company we currently use as our natural gas supplier has a similar contract to this?
So they still deliver through the pipeline. You either take their rack rates, or I mean, or you can go to these third-party suppliers and negotiate and try to get lesser rates, if that's.
My question is, Joe brought up some concerns about the contract from.
Oh, I see.
The contract that we have with the other company, is it similar?
Oh, had you reviewed that one? And, okay, I don't, it's in your packet, I don't, whether it has exact same language, I couldn't tell you.
Well, like I said, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm, I mean, I'm talking, I mean, we're looking at how much of our budget really matters in this. If we're saving some couple hundred dollars, I'll pay it.
You okay with making the change?
No, I'm okay with it.
Something that has to be approved.
I'll be okay with it.
We do, we do need to move forward, because we did sort of wait up until the last meeting we could do it, to give this other, and if they don't get it because of their tardiness, I'm fine by that, too. I just would feel remiss if I didn't at least tell you.
Everyone understands it's a two-year contract, and there's a lot to make, renew on a month-to-month basis.
And there's a termination fee.
Might send a review of that.
He brought up a concern. Sometimes when you save a few hundred dollars, maybe the other contract, you don't save it, but the language is better for the township, so.
Well, my guess is that I didn't see, I didn't redo the other contract, so I'm comparing the two, but.
Yeah. I don't, we don't have questions, I guess, about the vendor themselves. I'm not giving any sort of endorsement. I do this at home with third-party gas, I've done that for a number of years, and at this point, I actually have IGS, but I've had other ones in the past, too, so they are.
If it's going to save some money and it doesn't, it's a little grand, I think it's
I'm still not sure what you're fine with.
I'm fine with.
With the new.
Yeah, I mean, it saves us some money, but like I said, if it were a much larger contract, it's a variable rate, but that would be the same with the other vendor, I suspect, as well.
Yeah, uses a national index and adds a.
Index, right.
60 cents instead of 63 cents.
So I'll move to approve the gas customer choice contract with interstate gas supply.
Support. Motion by trustee Kalani, second by trustee Harper. Any other discussion or questions? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ales opposed nay. Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay, board reports? This is our second meeting in March. We start with trustee Petrucci?
I don't have a report to comment on.
Treasurer Horning?
Nothing other than we settled with the county today on our taxes and wrapped it up perfect and onto the new roll now, Germaine.
All right, trustee Colani?
I just want to congratulate the Heartland High School DECA program. I don't know if folks around in, in our community understand it. We have one of the most envious DECA programs, DECA, which deals with future leaders in business, marketing, and, um, business and marketing and distribution. In any case, we have, there's about seven thousand students that participated in DECA throughout, high schools, in high schools throughout the state. And this weekend was the state finals, and there was about two, over two thousand students that participated. Heartland, of those groups, sent four hundred kids from Heartland High School to compete, and they were down at the COBO Center. And of those, roughly seventy kids qualified for the international competition, which will be in Plano, Georgia. It's a huge deal. And I don't think it gets enough press. I don't think it gets enough recognition. But truly, Heartland High School and the Heartland Consolidated Schools and the teachers that teach that program, Mr. Riley, Mr. Oak, and I have to apologize, there's a new teacher, and I don't know her name. And so I really apologize that I don't know her name. But that group, those teachers do an outstanding role, are provided, in teaching these kids about business and business principles. And Heartland High School has a lot to be brought up for those young leaders, because they are our future leaders running business in this country. And I think it's a great, great, great program.
Thank you. Trustee Harper?
I just have one item that it's, I noticed in the operational reports that we have an enforcement action against the whole order for cutting down too many trees on this property. And I would just like to ask the board to possibly just review that particular ordinance and see if that's a policy that we really want to keep on the books. And since we haven't finished our review of all the ordinance, I just think that that might need to be reviewed, just asked at the board, look at that, and maybe some, in a future meeting, you know, have a quick discussion of whether or not we want to keep that policy.
Okay. Anything else? Trustee Germaine?
Similar to what Mr. Harper just said, I would like for us to discuss at a future date, the continued finance contributions to the Heartland Senior Center at the current rate. I think it's been unchanged for a number of years. And I know they're providing an excellent service, and as our population ages, we may want to consider increasing that if it's within our capacity.
I thought we added two thousand to that a few years ago, no?
It's been the same.
Has it been twenty? Okay. We'll add, we'll add that to a future agenda?
It's the time between now and next year.
Okay.
We can address that issue.
All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Supervisor, can I, can I say, I did, I did figure out one issue. I want to bring it to James' attention. There's a home on Old US 23, not too far down from Heartland Animal Hospital, same side of the road. Looks like it's vacant. There are about a hundred bags of garbage sitting out on the driveway. I'm just waiting for that to end up out on the street. So I don't know if the township can do anything about that, but it has to be cleared out.
Yeah, I can confirm that, uh, that's on our radar screen, and I don't know the status of it, so...
It's still there.
Yeah, I know it's still there. I do know that much. I'll, I'll let the, keep the board apprised of it.
Sooner or later, it's gonna end up on the screen, it's gonna be a mess, so we need to get that cleaned out.
Dwight, I don't want to call you out, but I did on behalf of the board want to wish you a happy birthday. I wanted to wish you a happy birthday.
Are you twenty-nine?
You're twenty-nine, right?
Ninety.
You're twenty-nine yesterday? And for those that don't know, Dwight, I bet you attend at least around eighty percent of our meetings, and I wanted to just say thank you, because it does mean a lot to us that you, you take your time out of your data to be active. And, and so thank you and happy birthday. Boarder review, this year was unbelievably light. We only had eighty applicants total, and only thirty-one showed up. I can't disstand, because we have two boards, but what we're gonna do next year is only have two days. So we're gonna do a Monday and a Monday evening, then we'll have a Wednesday, and we can wrap it up. This year we had three days and it was, but, um, and, and most of the, the adjustments were mandatory. Personal property tax now, if it's under eighty thousand dollars, you're exempt. And the veterans are now, if, if you're not able to work in such, you're exempt. So out of the, out of the total, I think twenty-five out of the thirty-one's that, that were adjusted, I believe, to substitute that effect were...
Corrections.
Were corrections obligated to do. So hats off to Jim Hessel, because he did a, him and his staff obviously did a nice job. If that's how few we had, I mean, the numbers must have been right, so... Um, that's all I have this evening. Manager Wickman, you have a report?
Uh, I do have a, a number of highlights I wanted to make from the operational reports, and of course, happy to answer any questions. Big kudos to staff for rallying around the Relay for Life, um, May 3rd and 4th at Heartland High School. And certainly appreciate any, any board support or interest in that. You can reach out and let us know. We do have a safer roads and pathways meeting next Monday. And after that meeting, with some key focus individuals that we've identified, and then after the phone polling, we'll really be making, uh, making some tweaks to the plan. And that'll be coming back for, to the board on April 22nd. And after that, after that time, that's when we sort of go into full communication mode, where we will be reaching out to residents and making them aware of, more intentionally, of what all is in that plan. We do have, uh, the Orr Valley Drive private road SAD, that you, that'll be on your April 1st agenda, the first step in many on that process. We have, uh, the website is, the new website is going live tomorrow. Very excited about that. Big thank you to Colani and, and for staff for the work they put into the content of that and the design. In conjunction with that, we're, we're also excited about a new public input piece to that mind mixer that we've been talking about here recently. And I hope to see residents engaging there. We do have a number of meetings with the, the major developers coming up and, and hope that board members can attend, although we understand if you can't. We, the CIP will be on your April 1st agenda. We will have our cost estimates updated, and, uh, so you'll get sheets for each project, and then we'll go through a more in-depth exercise of, of kind of giving your feedback and rank scoring them or prioritizing them for the April 22nd meeting. And those are the highlights I saw. Any questions on anything else?
Questions? Thank you. For the update? Our next, uh, agenda item is information and discussion on a downtown development authority feasibility at the village.
Uh, so I don't intend for lengthy discussion. I think it's relatively short. I only bring it to, on the board agenda because we did make it a part of our, my goals for this year. I said that I was gonna, given the village plan and all the needs that we have there and the safer roads and pathways issues that also overlap there in the village, as we look at the, the limited number of funding options, the DVAs was an idea that rose to the top again. As you know, I've, I've dismissed that as a, as a feasible option for us since, since I've gotten here because of, you know, the opt-out provisions for the other taxing units. The only thought here was that it was such a small piece and really for an area that really had a true need, not for some of these mega DVAs that you see and have given DVAs a bad name, quite frankly. So as much as I have the altruistic view, I can tell you that's not necessarily shared by the other units. I had talked with the, the county and the library, in particular, those are the two, two largest ones. And just because of the negative connotations of DVA, they didn't see anything that was, that we could get any traction with that idea. So, that being said, I, my report back to you is I, I have no recommendation for us to, to look at a DVA any further. And that's my...
I just have a couple of comments. You know, I'm not a big proponent of DVAs, because I think, in my term, they're vampires. They take away revenue from worthy entities to support a defined area. And the governor is very big proponent of DVAs, and several legislators are. And we've seen a plethora, uh, we've seen several new statutes coming out. We've seen industrial districts being created. We've seen, um, you know, TIFAs routinely developed. And I don't think our current legislative body, you know, currently doesn't understand when they create these statutes, what, what really happens, what's really happening. And the only way I would support a DVA, and I'm not totally against DVAs, if it's, one, if you structure it in such a way that it's time limited for the improvement in identified project that you plan on doing, and once that project's done and concluded, you know, the DVA doesn't go on in perpetuity. We've seen, but I, and it's a good, I'm, I'm probably talking way too much on the subject, but, uh, this past fall, one of the concerns I had was I was listening to the radio, and I heard Howell, Downtown Howell, Downtown Development Authority sponsoring a Halloween event. And I'm like thinking to myself, which is authorized under the statute, they can do it. But why isn't that an event that should be focused of the Chamber of Commerce or some other event? They're using tax dollars to support events that should be regularly supported by those who most directly benefit from it. And that's the problem I have. They've gotten way out of control, legislature's gotten way out of control. They ought to narrow the focus of the DVA, which is really designed to deal with infrastructure improvements and areas to improve in areas so people find it welcoming, like sidewalks, streetscapes, and things like that. And we've gotten way out of control. And I would support a DVA if, and I think our other taxing units might consider it if they knew it was finite, it was going to be limited to a certain period of time. The second aspect of a DVA that I would support is only if it's combined with a special assessment district. Those who benefit from the increase in values also have to have skin in the game, and they have to, I think that a portion of whatever project is done is, is done in combination with the, with the SAD. Even if it's a small ten percent or twenty percent of the overall project, we don't think outside the box. And that's the problem with these downtown development authorities. I really think that this is the, the kind of thing that really needs to be looked at statewide and in our own community, and in our own county. I work for the Huron Clinton Metropolitan Authority. We are affected by over five hundred different tax increment financing authorities. If you wonder why the Metro Parks is looking for, is, is, is increasing costs to their annual permits, is largely because they're affected by the taxes, the property tax taxes as well. And when they're captured by downtown development authorities, brownfield authorities, you know, local development authorities and other of these TIFAs, over a million dollars is captured communautively. And that's, it affects, these TIFAs affect our community colleges, they affect our libraries, they affect, um, every other taxing unit, school. But with the opt-out, you're never gonna see a new DVA, because everyone opt out today. But it's all the ones existing today. We need a reform, and the governor needs to know that, that we need reform in this area. That's my, my soapbox for the night.
Maybe he's watching.
Maybe he's watching.
But James, James, actually, his proposal on this, I thought he did, you did a nice job on it. It made, it made sense, and it was, it was for the infrastructure in the village.
Right. And I, I really don't have a problem with that, as long as it's finite time, and as long as those that directly benefit also have skin in the game, which is not always willing, they're not always willing to do that, so...
Motion, do a check?
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by trustee Harper. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Have a good evening.